Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I believe we're pretty close. Well, we're past time to start according to that clock. Let's welcome you to the Payson City Council meeting on September the 4th, 2019. The time is, we'll call it 6 o'clock. I've asked Carissa Hansen to come give us the homily prayer. I've given these ladies about, maybe a minute or two to prepare. Mary for the prayer. Okay, we switched.
Heavenly Father, you're great for this day, for the life that we live in. We are grateful for those who serve and protect us. Please bless those who are making decisions tonight, make life decisions for the city and for the people that live in it. We are grateful for their kindness and their service. We are grateful for our friends and neighbors and we thank you, Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, Carissa, you're up. And thank you very much for doing this.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go on to be consent agenda. Approval of the August 15, 2019 special city council meeting and approval of the August 21st, 2019 regular city council meeting. You have a motion?
Go ahead and make the motion that we approve the August 15 special city council meeting and August 21 regular council meeting consent agendas.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll go ahead and open a public forum. Just bear in mind that when you come and speak with us, if that's what your decision is, that you come to the microphone and give us your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes if you could do that. So we'll go ahead and open a public forum. Yes, I will. It's not on again.
Good evening. My name is Ann Humphreys and I live on the east side of Payson on Look for View Drive. And I am the treasurer of the Friends of the Library. And we had our annual book sale and we did awesome this year. It was very hot, but very successful. We earned $1,897.75.
Wonderful.
Thank you for all the wonderful books and fabulous year in donations and all the people that bought them. And if you've bought books, you can always donate them when you're done with them and they'll sell them again next year, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for just a short time. My name is Ryan McGuire. Unfortunately, I don't live in Payson, but I live in Spanishport. We grew up here in this community and the reason I'm here is I'm, two reasons. One is I'm the new principal at Mount Nebo Junior High School. And so I spent most of my career in Payson. And so excited to be back and as I say, grew up here and actually graduated with Mr. Welton. I won't tell you the year because that'll date us. But yes, I go to Payson High. Anyway, two reasons here. One is we have a great student being recognized tonight with American additional award. Want to support him. But also, I just want to take a minute and say thank you to the council, the mayor of the council for our new resource officer this year. Officer Killian, you probably know him. He's just been a tremendous asset for our school. And I know you'll probably notice the smarts of a Payson junior and feel the same way. I just want to express our gratitude for that resource. We know it doesn't come at a free and there is a cost there. It's just such a great thing for our school, for our community. Several parents come to me, the wonderful asset. That's been, and again, thank you to the council for that decision and for that resource at our school. So thank you again for all you do.
Thank you, Ryan. We talked together about a week ago and we had a very good visit. And we are very thankful that we can have an officer in the school. So thank you for what you do, Ryan. Anyone else like to speak within the public forum? Okay, not seeing anyone, then we'll go ahead and go to staff reports.
Mayor, council, I'll give you a few updates. We did get approved for the NRCS funding, which is, you know, the relief for trying to deal with the fires and the flooding that then comes after that. So I don't have an exact list of all the projects that they did approve because some of them got moved into a different funding mechanism that hasn't been approved yet, but that will help us at least, you know, hopefully the next year, deal with that. The county's the sponsor on that, so they've already hired the engineering firms to start working on that. So that was some good news. We had a meeting today.
Kind of interrupted. Do we have to match any of these funds or?
Some of them we do, yeah.
So do we know how much yet or?
I can get that. I'll email that to you when I, but yeah, we've come up with some money.
Twenty-five percent is that?
Yeah, it's twenty-five percent matched, so.
But we can do in time, there, right?
Um, some of it, yeah. We had a meeting with FEMA today with risk management and a lot of the representatives from our congressional and senate representatives from the federal government, so that was good. We'll see how that goes and if we can do anything about some of our business partner issues with FEMA left clean, but we did at least discuss that. It was a good meeting, so. And then we are in the process of reviewing some of the master plans that we've been waiting for, so we will get those back to the consultants and then hopefully that still will be on track for approval. We've got a lot of development going on at S U L O and it's been busy, so. And I'm glad Onion Days is over, too. I don't know if you guys have any questions, but that's kind of.
The sewer line project, is it going?
No.
I don't see my answer to that.
It is going, but no, that's.
What's going on with that?
The existing line has collapsed multiple times trying to lay the new one by it. And so until we can get farther to the south and turn to the west, it's going to be a constant problem, which is why we wanted to replace it because it's, you know, it should have a three-inch wall. It has a three-quarter inch wall left because of the hydrogen sulfide. So that's slowed us down, but it is moving, but not as fast as we would like, so. And yes, it will cost us more money to deal with it collapsing constantly and having to bypass the walls, so. But it hasn't been a fun project, so thanks for asking the question.
You're welcome.
Mayor, city council, I am too glad that Onion Days is on and passed for another year. I'd like to thank Travis's crew who helped us with all the streets and the closings and all the other city employees. It went really well. I think it was probably the smoothest Onion Days we've had in a long, long time, so I thank those departments for kicking in some help and give us through, so. Our end of the month tolls for August are as follows. We had 138 arrests that included 270 offenses, 210 citations. It resulted in 317 violations. We had 1,267 tolls for service, five DUI arrests, 361 traffic stops, and 26 traffic accidents. So kind of a busy month, so. I think that's all I have tonight. Unless you have something more.
The time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to stand up and thank the staff and all the departments for their help with Onion Days and the council for being at many of the events. As Brad said, it was really smooth. There were not a lot of problems that were brought to our attention. A lot of participation with the Tete needs as a children's carnival or fair was packed again and just a lot of fun for everybody. I've heard a lot of good comments from these folks from out of town saying they'd love to come participate in those events, so thanks to the mayor and council and to all the department heads and staff and all the employees. It was a good event.
Doesn't appear we have any more staff that wants to come, so I'll go ahead and move on to council reports, starting with council officials.
Well, for the most part, I enjoyed everything but the pie portion of Salem Days, or what? Salem. Well, see, I was thinking about the miserable part and Salem came to my mind.
What type of pie you want, Tony?
Yeah, I can tell. No, it's, sorry about that. That was a Freudian slip. No, I did enjoy it, even the opportunity to help raise funds for that mural project. It was fun all around. I did have one little thought, just something maybe to look at next year. I've had a lot of people ask if we could separate the carnival from the park to maybe maximize the space that we have there, so it's not quite so crowded. So is that coming around next year and we're a little closer? Let's bring that back up and maybe discuss that as an option. But otherwise, I think it all went well. I even took a car into the car show after we pushed it down the street. I'm thankful for the community. They jumped right out and pushed that car right down the road, so anyway, thank you.
I just wanted to thank everybody for the help with Onion Days. It was a great event. I don't know if any of you had a chance for Tete and Eat their fundraiser, was it Duck Race? I think they had. Hundreds and hundreds of ducks going down that stream, so that was pretty fun. But it was a good time and thank everybody that helped with that, especially Janine. She just puts in a lot of effort. I think she gets to take the next month off, right, Dave? After Onion Days and salmon supper and?
Just one day.
Just one day? Okay. Just one other thing for Development Services. I have a compliment for you guys. I have a builder that was, is building some houses in Payson here. And I told him it was, we're going to use as a test for Development Services and see how things go. And so it's because he can report back to me. So I go to his meetings every once in a while and they always complain about how long it takes to get building permits from all these cities. So I went last time and they just got some building permits from Payson. And I said, "How long did it take?" And they said, "Three or four days." And they all jumped up and gave me a high five. So high five to you guys, so thank you.
I also want to thank Janine for the wonderful job that she does in hurting all of us around for Onion Days. It was great this year. I had a lot of people that commented and thought that the talent and everything was the best that we've had. Anyway, it was really, really good. I enjoyed it. I almost shed a tear over the night when I had to leave and go home, but then I thought, no, that sweat. It was so hot. So anyway, a wonderful time and I appreciate, and I appreciate all you citizens for supporting the Payson city and everything. Thank you.
I too would like to echo what you've been said about staff and the holiday and the citizens, and I'd like to do a special thanks to my cousin Craig and Cindy Bies. They transported me in the parade. And also to Larry Carter, who supplied the vehicle for the council. So I just want to make sure that I make note of that. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Our employees work really, really hard over this last weekend to make sure, and not just this weekend, but the previous weekends, to make sure everything runs smoothly. We have a lot of volunteers and it takes a lot of hands to make an event this big go off. And similar to the other council, I have people say, "Hey, we've been coming here all our life and we felt like this one was one of the best Onion Days we've been to." Also, we had, I don't know who it was, but I saw some pictures. I think it was the Payson High School Drama Club that went and cleaned up the Tete needs. So some community service that was done by our local students. I thought that was fantastic. I love community involvement. We're a big city and a lot of people to make it look and work well. I am glad that unlike the library, that we didn't make $1,900 throwing pies. Otherwise, there would have been a lot of pies in my face. At a dollar a shot, 1,900 pies adds up pretty quick. But the pie throwing contest was really fun, or not contest, I just, I guess, I just got pied. There was no contest to it.
Doug, we can thank Brent and Cylinda Stanton for their granddaughters putting it on Facebook. Our faces are cream all over.
Got me like 20 pies in the face thanks to them. Anyway, also shout out to library, friends of the library and the library board. They do amazing work all year long to keep the community engaged. They help every aspect of our population, from those in need and high risk and those that just want something to read. They really are a great asset to our community. I guess the only other thing, the only bad thing was the parade. As we were going out in the parade, I took my first step out of the parade and I got smacked in the side of the head by some Sour Patch Kids, by a councilwoman riding in the car. Yeah, other than that, it was good. Oh, no, you were a good thrower. I felt it. Anyway, great event. Thanks to everybody who helped out. And also, by the way, in case I forget, I love when we have community show up, whether it's a hot issue or not a hot issue. I think community involvement is good, so I'm glad to see so many people here. We've got a couple of hot issues and it's good to see people here involved, so I appreciate you being involved in the process.
I just get to choose three, four, five, six, everything they said. I just want to say Linda was a food right next to her on that car. I don't think I've had so much fun in years. And I think we dropped more candy in the car than we threw out. So you'll probably be digging that out for months. Anyway, thank you. I appreciate you guys all coming in, just like Doug said. We like to see people come here because they find out what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to scouts certificates. I know we have some scouts. If you all would come up to the front, then we'll have councilwoman Carter interact with you.
Okay. What I'm going to do is have you stand right here, okay? One chair, we are? We'll get it for you. If we don't, if I don't call your name, when I'm done, come over here and let them know and they'll give you the certificate, okay? First off, we have Branson. Branson. B-R-A-N. Oh. That's wrong. No wonder. Branson Porter, right? Okay, Branson, in just a minute, we'll get you a new certificate. All right? I want you to tell us what you love about scouting. You thinkin' boys, okay?
I like scouts, see, and I've been from the scouts. I like scouting.
Yeah, it's good. That's great. Okay, now we have Spencer White. All right, Spencer. What do you like about scouting?
I like scouting because the more badges you earn, the younger ones look up and want to get the new badges that you have.
Good. That's the first I heard that, so that's great. Okay, Jack Webb. Okay, Jack, there you go. Whoops. Now tell us why you like scouting.
Because I like to be connected with the troop.
That's good, too. Thank you. Cody McFarland. There you go, Cody.
I just like the fact about being outdoors.
Just being out, huh?
Just being out there.
Good. And Trey Ruck? Did I say it right? Okay, there you go. What do you like about scouting?
Hiking.
Hiking? That would be the least of mine. And your name?
Alex.
Alex who? Who?
Knight.
Knight? K-N-I? G-H-T? Okay. Okay, we'll get this new one. And what do you like?
I like the military.
That'd probably be my love. Hiking. Good. Okay, I want each one of you to come and go in line and shake a hand to the council. And don't forget me. For real. Thank you for coming. Come on, I want to see a firm handshake. Good job. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number four. CTC Mayor's Youth Recognition Award in Kimball.
Hey, the first one of you is, and I apologize if I cannot pronounce these names right, but Guadalupe Cortez?
Yes.
Come on up here. Guadalupe is from Payson Junior High and it's very nice. We have our principal from Payson Junior High is here and I will read what was written about her. This is by Mrs. Pala. She wrote, "I would like to recognize Guadalupe Cortez. She was elected LIA, which is Latino In Action, president by her peers. Guadalupe has an excellent predisposition to help anybody who needs it. She sets her goals and successfully masters them. Her excellent, she has an excellent sense of humor, she has a charismatic personality, and she makes excellent choices. This last two weeks, she showed her leadership qualities and engaged with the whole classrooms. Every day in class, I can see her using strategies and engaging, doing assignments with her classmates. All of these qualities make Guadalupe an excellent leader. Guadalupe does an excellent job. Congratulations." Yeah, at the end, we'll, at the end, we'll do pictures where you can come and get a picture. So the next one is from Payson High School and this is Gabriella. And I'm not totally sure how to say this last name and I know I'll say it really, really bad. Gabriella, come up and we'll call out your last name. Oh, maybe she's on here. They called them? They were supposed to call.
Isn't it Emily?
Gabriella?
I think you just got it wrong. I think it's Emily.
Okay, there's, I've got, oh, sorry. I just read the parent's name. Emily. Gabriella must be Emily's mother. This ball is the ball apparently tonight. This is Emily Perez. And then how do you say?
Well.
Okay, see, she says it really cute and I would say it's really, really bad. So what they wrote about Emily is Emily Perez is a senior at Payson High School. She's an awesome student and she's very deserving of this mayor recognition award. She is one of the very best. What I appreciate about Emily is that she enjoys learning just for the sake of learning. She's very interested in history, politics, and loves to discover more information about and other subjects. She is currently a member of Latino In Action, which is a very influential service organization at Payson High. Not only is she a member of the club, but she's very involved and is one of the leaders of the club. So congratulations. And then last but not least, from Mount Nebo Junior High, it is, and I won't say the family's name this time, is Cody McFarland. You want to come up? Oh, he's doing double duty tonight. Way to go. This is like a guy who knows how to multitask. So this is, I've known Cody for about two weeks, which may not seem like a lot, but he has made an impact on me. Our class Get to Know You Game was a literal game of Clue. Students needed to gather information about their classmates and input it into a spreadsheet. Cody organized his data, not only with the written information, but also included colors on his sheet. He organized it in a completely unique way and he gave me the opportunity to teach the class using his spreadsheet as an example that there can be multiple right ways to solve a problem. And that was Mrs. Miller. And then another one wrote, and I think this was the librarian, well, Madison Stewart, I think, wrote this. Well, maybe the librarian. Cody McFarland is a kind and humble boy who thinks of others before himself. He's not afraid to try new things and he's always willing to go out of his way to help others. He served on Spring Lake Hop Squad and adults have entrusted him with many responsibilities that others would not want to or would not be qualified for. Last year, he earned the Student of the Year Award. He is an honored student of both English and math and he is our new, or, he is to our new school and is already very friendly and welcoming. Our librarian has already seen his value and trustworthiness and awarded him with a year-long library pass. Congratulations. Did you know that? We will invite the parents to come up and take pictures and, yeah, city council can come down and if our principals aren't taking pictures or being a picture, I'll take pictures. So we appreciate you attending.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go on to number five, Chamber Business of the Month.
Thank you, mayor, council. Well, where I am now is Business of the Month for September. And once we congratulate all the well-deserving people. Just a few items. Every third Tuesday of the month, the chamber does a breakfast club. And this September 17th impact is sponsoring that breakfast club. It's networking opportunities and we usually have a presenter. More info to come on that. But also what is significant about that date is September 17th, here at 6:30, we are doing a meet candidates night where you can meet who is running for council. And anyway, there'll be some questions and you'll be able to get to know that. The other cool thing about that that's important is they're going to announce and kind of go through how we are rank voting, decent and ranked voting. So that's going to be an event that's open to public. It's here, September 17th, and that's at 6:30 PM. Other thing to know, next month, we are piggybacking off a high school event and doing a child local. And so the event is a next step forward for the school and we are piggybacking on that. And we've been working with the school district and the high school specifically to get some businesses in there with some booths. And we'll have high attendance, we'll be, because people are already. And we'll have high attendance, because people will already be there for this event. So, more to come on that. You can like us on our Facebook page to find out more info on that. That's Payson Sac, when the area Chamber of Commerce. But let's get to the reason we're here. Unless there are any questions or concerns or smart remarks.
Don't, you don't want to go from that one out.
For me, or for the Chamber.
Juan, we talked about it before. It's not a smart remark, I'm just wondering, we're around that billboard, if we can yank down that last 5% that's still hanging on for dear life?
Yeah, yeah, so actually, our executive director met with our city planner here, and plans are in the works, I guess.
Our department's disconnected, the streets department will take that down. It's just, I mean, they started to work. He's got it on the list, he said he hasn't forgotten.
I've been trying to ship it down with my PT gun. Works, I miss every time. But any other questions? I'll pass along some good compliments I heard about on the days. It was well-organized, so thank you to the staff and the city. And the comments I've been receiving is the efforts not to have dogs in the park. That was, that was great, I noticed less, less dogs. There are some of those who just despise dogs, and I think it helped keep the event clean. But I love dogs, I'm a dog person, so that mattered to me, but that's some compliments I've heard. Anyway, we'll get to the reason we're here. That is to congratulate Business of the Month for September. They, they do quite a bit for our community. We are grateful for them and what they do for this area. And we'd like to invite Gabe Dunn up. Big old tires is this month's Business of the Month.
A tire guy, so I'm not super good at talking, so, but I, I love doing business in Payson. There's wonderful people. We are, we're blessed just to say it, that we get to come serve you the city, the people of it every day. There's a lot of good people, there's a lot of people doing a lot of good. There's a lot of people helping other people out, we could see a lot of that. And we're just really, really grateful for the type of people that we get to meet in Payson and the type of people that become our friends, so thank you all very, very, very much.
One thing I'd like to interject, I forgot to do this, but I would really like to do this. I'd like to thank the state road employees that did take care of our interchange. It was a little bit prior to and during our celebration, so thanks to them. Okay, we'll go on to D. Action items, Public Carrying slash Resolution, Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Budget. I believe Sarah, you're here to give us a presentation.
Okay, so, these are different amendments, most of them are carryovers from last year. And then there's a few for this new fiscal year, so I'll just take over them quickly. So, we had the $2,000 from our lobbyist funding from last year that we didn't spend, that I am including in the carryover. We have $25,000 that the facilities had left over in their budget. So, if they'd be retiring, they have some extra funds, and students like to use that to recover the building block. So, we have to do a non-transitation study. We did not spend any funds on that transitation study due to the public road, there's still no lawsuits. I don't know if that's been resolved yet, if that's been resolved. So, we're waiting to see what happens with that before we move forward. Look, we would hire a consultant to put in, do a study on whether or not we should have a transportation fee to help towards our road to keep them in better shape. We had our Public Information Officer contract that we had with Sydney Jakes. We still have funds that we need to, or extend this plan for. We'll carry over to that, about $15,000 on that. Our codifier, we did not spend the funds for that that we had set aside. So, we're carrying over the $5,000 for that. We have $30,000, you guys did a budget amendment back in February to help get the furnishings to finish off the remodel. We still haven't had anything, obviously, for that and some desks, so that's the amount carried over for that. The fire received some federal funds from the two fires we had last year. And they didn't get the funds until probably mid-spring of this year, so they're carrying that forward. And I believe Scott is going to buy a water tender, Scott here?
I'm in the corner.
There. Water tender, is that what that's for, a water tender? The pickleball courts, which are finished, but as of June 30th, we didn't have all the invoices in, so that's what was remaining in the pickleball courts, and they look awesome, and hopefully, they're being used a lot. Are they? That's awesome, that's great to hear. The elders grant, this is what's left over. Each year, the senior department gets an elders grant, and this is what they have not spent, so it would just be carried forward, and I believe they get about $6,000 every year. So, she uses that for different projects that are senior citizens of our community. They're, on the streets, he had about $30,000 left over in his repair. He needs a grader, something desperately bad, according to Kent, so he would like to start a lease for this grader, and this would be the initial payment. And then going forward, he would budget for that out of the Class C funds. And if you remember, the county passed quarter percent tax, so we will, will start seeing those funds. I don't know how the state's gonna disperse those to the different cities, if they're gonna earmark them, like they do with Class C, I hope they do. But those, if they don't, we'll earmark them just specifically for street, so we shouldn't get any more of them to that.
Then we budget indoor budget, though? So, we're gonna have that, so?
Yes, yes, we'll have excess, whatever we need in. I wanted to see, make sure that it was coming, I hate to budget without knowing exactly what it is. So, whoever takes my position, hopefully, they'll watch that and budget that. If it's the street apartments, like, use more funds. Sidewalks, we did not spend any budget for the sidewalks, so we're carrying that over $2,000. Community of Care, there are some commissions from different cities, General, Ocean, Samson, and San Antonio, so she is carrying those forwards to use to the community of Care. She uses the Sam Shaw grant, I don't know what Sam Shaw stands for, but it's also part of the community of Care budget. She doesn't have to spend that yet, we're carrying that over, and then the indoor budget. They need $420 carried over as well, yeah. And then the police department, they had quite a bit left over in their fuel budget, so they are also doing a remodel, and they want to use that excess to purchase human pulse for their new remodel for their patrol officers. And then $3,000, Steve also had a lot left over in his facility budget. There were some projects that he didn't have to do, and then we had just some set aside in September in case anything broke. He had about $30,000 left over, and golf course unit, AC unit, something terrible, right, Linda? So, they replaced that, that was about $15,000. And then we were using the other $15,000 to put towards the bathroom remodel in addition to the $10,000 that the county will, that they have approved to put towards their bathroom remodel. I know that's not gonna be enough, but hopefully, that'll be a good start for them. So, that's the total of carryover from your general fund balance, about $570,000. But as I was looking at last year's budget to see where we ended, we have quite a bit that we're gonna drop in the fund balance, because departments did a great job of spending more than what they had to. So, your general fund balance, we dipped into it quite a bit, so hopefully, it will still be around 15% to 18% general fund balance. But hopefully, it won't be over like we have it in last year. It's a good problem to have, but we still want to get it, nice to see. All right, so, the fire, our West CBBG project, I believe that's gonna be finishing up soon, but it was not done, so here's what we have left. It's paid out of the CBBG fund, that's the grants portion that we get. And then in the taxi fund, these are different projects that Kent was not able to get to. I'll go line by line, I know. You know, the electric, it actually, they have about $40,000 that they need to carry over for land that they're purchasing. On the capstone budget, we have earmarked 1.8 million for the ball field. In our budget that you approved, we did an additional $200,000. We have a total of $200,000 set aside for those ball fields so far. The water project that was left was lateral honey irrigation connection, so they have about 160,000 on that one. The landfill, they have studies that they're still working on, they have 174 left on that. And then $50,000, Kent had that left over, he wants to put into equipment just in case anything happens with equipment. It's pretty expensive to return his equipment out there, that we tried to have a huge expense, because there's such a complicated use of equipment, yeah. All right, the electric, we carry over, each year, we try to put money into a savings account to pay off FSC and the lines that we need to pay for through our agreements. So, we have $340,000 in that, in addition to $80,000 that we approved in the FY20 budget. So, they have $420,000 on that. And then the wastewater project, there was quite a few projects in there that they were not able to get to. I think wastewater probably had one of the most terrible years last year, sorry. Infrastructure problems and problems with their sewer treatment. So, there's quite a few projects on there that we're carrying over, and hopefully, they'll get to. And then the RV club, this is for the golf course, they have not finished that yet, as of June 30th, so that's the amount to be carried over. And then this is just, you know, the details of getting that budget into theirs. We did a capture for the general fund, into the golf course fund, so they can have money in their accounts to pay for the appliances for the AC unit and the bathrooms. But not double, it's just kinda ins and outs that I have to do. And then the storm, Kent has money set aside to buy some land, he didn't spend that last year. And then the Ridge Lane Detention Basin, we did not finish that. So, those are the carryovers. Any questions on those, so we go to the New Year Budget Amendment?
So, on storm drain land, are we just waiting for it to become available?
I think he just puts that aside just in case he has to buy any piece of land for its storm drain projects. Whether it's easements or piece of property.
Because I know we need a lot of land, especially to put that area down by Wilson School, we can popper storm drains.
And if he doesn't spend that, you can always just carry it forward in years and build up that. So, if he has land, a big purchase, he can always build that up year by year.
Just one other question, you know about sidewalks? Do we not get the sidewalks?
No, I don't know. I don't know with all the other projects that he had to do within the city.
I was just wondering, were you like ultimately ambitious, or if this is?
I think that's, if I'm understanding it right, you know, when we have to repair some sidewalks for tang cap issues, it's a trip, so it probably wasn't planned sidewalks, yeah.
Right.
Some repairs, where we have, repairs need to be done. We are repairs, it's taking care of some sidewalk issues along the, uh, right here.
Good question. Okay, so the New Year Budget, sorry, did I work too fast, because?
No, I just, like, see the money spent.
Yes, okay. So, the economic development, they still want to keep working on the branding, and there's some contract services for Vario, I don't know if I'm saying that right, Brian might be saying that right?
Vario.
Vario. So, we are asking for $40,000 to help with our brand and to roll it out and get it going right. And then, what is this park overlay, go into RDA for that one? Water filters, Travis, that there are some issues with some water filters that just came up, so that's an additional amount that he's asking for, maybe he's funding out for that.
That for secondary or primary, that's the secondary water system, right?
The I.
Yeah. Especially after this, really.
Yeah, and then the Public Day Impact theme has been used to remodel the ambulance room. Scott said he's still in process of finishing that, and he's got plenty of time to finish that. We've asked him for new money to finish that. And then the police department, they have new revenues coming in, this is where they get money, and we just give them the budget authority in their respective accounts. So, you can see that they've got some compliance, this donation, some DUI shifts, and the initial startup that they received from the hospital with that new contract that they have. So, they're just putting that into their written accounts. And that's it, we'll just start RDA, when we do the RDA budget. Any questions?
Okay, then I think we're to the point where we'd like to open a public hearing. If there's a motion to do so, I'd like to hear it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, general rules apply to this public hearing. Please step to the mic if you would, and identify yourself and your address and where you live. And try to keep your address, your comments to three minutes or less. Just whether you agree or disagree with the previous comments, and please don't repeat already stated information. So, if anyone would like to come and take advantage of the public hearing, it's open. Okay, not seeing anyone wanting to take advantage of that, we'll go ahead and, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any further counsel discussion?
I have a question for you, Sarah. On the business park overlay, is that money coming from the RDA into this?
That's the one that I said we'll get to.
Okay, so that is coming from the RDA. Okay, I just wonder if it went from the RDA to this.
Yes, I just do them all in one budget worksheet, which is, you can worry about that.
Okay, then I guess we're ready for a motion on the resolution? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to the fiscal year 2019-2020 Budget Amendments.
Okay, there's been a motion, it's been seconded, this calls for a roll call vote, starting with the council in the aisle.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Yes.
Would it be possible that just to move item B to redevelopment, and do that budget while we're talking budgets?
I believe so, if the council feels that it'd be okay, I think we do that.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll just make a motion that we amend the agenda, and then, after that, I'll make.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor going to General Redevelopment Agency?
Just amend the, amend the.
Oh, amend the agenda, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make the motion that we move into the RDA.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion has been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in RDA. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, as you can see, our only budget amendment for the RDA is to do a project for pavement restoration in the business park, it's a one-inch overlay, so that's $230,000, and we'll use fund balance in the RDA, which last time we checked, we had about 1.6 million in the RDA fund balance.
Kent, Kent, Kent indicated that, uh, it's time to overlay that to preserve the years for the relevant, there's a lot of heavy traffic in that, so it's just a good time to do that. We have the funds, we know to do it, we'll make that road, it'll last a lot longer.
So we made sure that we're not gonna be cutting in more holes, I mean, with people building there, you know how they just cut another one there just recently?
Yeah, I mean, if, if more property sell and develop, there will probably something have to connect on. I mean, we can't wait till all the, the business parks full to overlay or the road can fail for that. We find out that Ted must be happy that, uh, that more properties develop out there with this, like these properties, probably will have to be.
Dave, would you, just for a second, just to clarify for the folks that are here, would you, uh, talk a little bit about redevelopment agency, just explain it to them? Just briefly.
Why are there different budgets and are there just different talks?
Yeah, so under the Utah state law, municipalities can create what's called a redevelopment agency. There, there's different names and it changes over time, there's the economic development area, there's the redevelopment area. But it's a way that you can, uh, create a, an entity. And the way the state law is the governing body of the council, also the directors of the RDA. But it's a way that, uh, when you create it, you give the taxing entities, Eagle School District, the other taxing entities in the area needs to agree to that. But as, if that's created, like the RDA in the business park was created, and then it sets the baseline of the tax of the property. And then as development happens, the property tax increases. The city gets all of that tax instead of just a portion of it, the school district agrees to it. And that with that extra, with the extra funds, then they can, like in, in the business park, we, the city put the road in with all the infrastructure so that it would help encourage development. And so, uh, that was created about twenty plus years ago, twenty-five years ago. The RDA, uh, funding has ended, now the funding is just normal, the majority goes to the school district and the other, uh, taxing entities. But we received a good boost for that to, to get the infrastructure in there to help, uh, encourage economic development. And so those, those types of entities are legal and allowable in the, in the state and many cities take advantage of those.
And they're based, they're different pools of money.
They're different.
That's why they're different budgets, I just wanna make sure that everything's.
Yeah, they are different budgets, this, this RDA money, and if, if you really go back to the history of our RDA, the city purchased some, some of the properties on the business park with city money to the RDA. And now the RDA has quite a bit of money because they've been able to sell that and help develop the business park. That's why we have some extra money to, to overlay that road. It's been twenty-five plus years with that road being in place.
And there are only certain things we can use that money for, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Kim, do we need to make any no cares directors or are we okay? Okay, do we have to have a public hearing on this?
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing.
We'll go ahead and open a public hearing, I'll entertain a motion for public hearing, it's all moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, again, a generic explanation of public hearing, you can step up to the mic and identify yourself and where you live. And please limit your comments to three minutes and, uh, please don't re, re, repeat, uh, information over and over. So if anyone would like to get up and express their, uh, opinions, please do so. Okay, not seeing anybody, I'll entertain a motion to close the, uh, public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been motioned and the seconded, it's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, any further council discussion on, uh, the resolution? If not, then we'll go ahead and entertain a, a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt, uh, amendments to the RDA, RDA budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion been seconded, that calls for a roll call vote, starting with councilman, councilman, uh, Christensen, sorry.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Now we'll entertain a motion to adjourn from redevelopment agency.
So, my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back and start on number two. Vacation of portion of Yamazaki subdivision plot A and create, uh, creation of Yamazaki subdivision, plot B. I guess. Okay, Jill.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that interruption there. So we have a pretty simple item before you, but I've got a couple of slides just to explain the process that we're going through. So as the mayor mentioned, um, we are looking at an amendment to the Yamazaki subdivision. So there is a current Yamazaki subdivision, uh, plot A. So this is actually the recorded plot that was done in the early nineties, uh, when this subdivision was done, it included five, or four different parcels there, as you can see. Now the area that's highlighted in blue, so that is the area that we're focusing on tonight. As you can see with this, uh, plot that was recorded back in the nineties, uh, for whatever reason, unknown to me, those, those lots on the right-hand side, they did not, uh, follow the same line as the large parcel there on that corner. Um, and so there was a gap in that. Over time, the property owners that own those lots there, they had acquired that additional twenty-five feet, um, to, um, deepen the, the lots that they have there along eight hundred south. And so it's what is being proposed, or as you can see here, this is the current, um, Utah County parcels, um, as they're configured. So this property is located on the corner of four hundred west and eight hundred south. On one of the parcels, there is an existing home and an existing, um, accessory building on that, but the other two parcels that are owned by the Philistram, um, trust. Uh, they're currently vacant and they're interested in selling those for new homes. Uh, and so in order for them to facilitate the sale of those parcels, uh, they're wanting to combine, uh, the larger residential piece with the additional twenty-five feet, uh, that was purchased at a, at a separate point in time. And so that would create the new Yamazaki plot B, um, which as you can see is consistent with the parcel to the left. Uh, by incorporating the twenty-five feet to the north. Uh, the applicant, um, has been working with all owners of these three lots. You've got, uh, Fowers on lot number three, and then the Philistram trust owns lot one and lot two. I may not say those correctly, I might have got it wrong. Anyway, so, um, so they have, uh, property owner approval for this, they have gone through the process. Uh, also with this, there will be recorded easements around the perimeter of the property. Actually, back in ninety-three, there were no public utility easements established. And so that is, um, you know, a condition of approval that they've been, um, able to incorporate into this plot. So the applicants are just requesting approval from the city council for this plot amendment, um, so it can be recorded and they can move forward with the sale of those parcels.
Okay, Jill, thank you for that presentation, uh, council discussion?
Can I see those parcels developed? So they're not just a weak patch on the end and south?
Yes. Okay, if there's no, if there's no further discussion, we'll go, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we vacate the portion of Yamazaki subdivision plot A and create the Yamazaki subdivision, plot B.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Hey, one question on that.
Yes.
This is down the road, but the driveways that go in there, can they, when we get to that point, can they be curved so they're not backing out onto eight hundred south? It's actually a concern that some of our residents here on six hundred east have, is backing out into busy traffic and that street's busier than any street we have in town. I don't know if they're big enough, but when you sit down to do that, can we look into that to make sure that we're, or see what we can do anyway? I don't know what we can do.
I know that the motion already passed, but it might be a good suggestion to actually require that that lot on the corner actually receive access on four hundred west.
Okay, is that better to do that right now than when they come back with the proposal?
It would be, then there would be a note on the flat that's recorded that it is limited to access on four hundred west. We wouldn't be able to do anything with that middle parcel, I mean, and they may be able to work with UDOT. And UDOT may, or eight hundred south is a state route. UDOT may require that that corner lot be off of the resident, or the local street versus the highway.
What's a?
But if we did wanna make that a condition of approval, that would be something that the city council could consider. Otherwise, it would just be a suggestion to the applicant to have it on the site.
They're important, huh? Yeah, yeah, I got a form. What's the best way to go ahead and revisit that?
Just a motion to reconsider the previous, um, action.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to reconsider the previous.
There you go, make a motion to reconsider the previous action.
Hold on that and then I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes, uh, so I'll entertain a new motion to include, uh, access on four hundred, uh, four hundred west.
Did you wanna make a new motion, Brian, or you want? Okay, so I make the motion that we, uh, approve the vacation of the portion of Yamazaki subdivision, plot A, and creation of Yamazaki subdivision, plot B, with the, with the condition that lot, I can't see it.
Lot one?
Lot one is, has parking or drive access on the east side, the driveway on the east side off of eight hundred south. Eight hundred.
So off of four hundred west.
Four hundred, off of four hundred west.
You don't want it on the south, you want the driveway access to be limited to.
Yes, I don't want it on eight hundred south anymore.
Limited to four hundred west.
Okay, we have a motion, it's, uh, been, well, I've, you had the motion, right? Okay, we need to second it, we got a second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great additions.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Okay, we'll go to number three, Spring Lake Elementary pedestrian safety, which I'm sure that there are some here that are very interested in that. Dave, would you speak with us?
Yes, Mayor Katz, I'll give you an update from last meeting and then we'll open it up, uh, your discussion. But, uh, since our last meeting, uh, we did meet with the principal of Spring Lake Elementary and one of the Kathy Carley from the district. We talked about different options, about other things that, uh, that could be done down in that area. I know Principal Jordan, I don't think she's here, but she indicated that, um, that they are concerned with both sides of the school. There's more and more traffic on the south side as well and they, uh, they have, uh, added a few more teachers on the school property. They, they're not allowed to send teachers off school property, uh, but they've, they've had more people there, uh, they're just trying to keep the children as safe as they can. We talked about the study that we had done with health engineering, uh, we talked about updating that, uh, plan. I left a message with the engineer, haven't heard back from him, but, uh, my understanding from the principal is that this time of year is more crowded than when we did the study back in April. So we wanted to update it with the current traffic. The school district also talked about reaching out to UDOT to do a study for us. We did check with UDOT, they do not do studies unless it's on a state highway. So they would not do a study, but, uh, we looked into that. The school district's also looking at, um, putting a gate in the playground area so they can walk through the school and, but there's no openings through the school, they have to walk around. But they, they're looking at if they have a possibility of putting a gate in the playground area so that the children can walk through there and not on the road to the, to the other area. We also talked about painting, no parking on that three-way, uh, intersection that we've been talking about. We will do that, we're, we're just looking through the UDOT standards, uh, to see how far you can paint it back and, and also we're looking to see if we could add an additional traffic, uh, stop, a stop sign. We did have quite a bit of discussion with the school district because if you have, they have other places in town, in the city where there's four-way or three-way stop signs and the traffic getting backed up and it even causes some additional problems. So we wanna be aware of that, but we're looking to see if that would help putting another stop sign in. I think that's all we talked about, Doug, you were in the meeting, do you remember anything else we talked about with the, with the school district folks?
Other than that, the community should never have been approved without sidewalks on both sides.
Yeah, we talked about sidewalks.
Yeah, um, yes, we talked about looking at all of those things, um, there was some concern about the three-way stops and actually creating more confusion and hassle. But I, and there was some, some talk about the new road being able to access out on the south end, having alleviated some traffic already. But we didn't talk in depth about that. The one thing that I, I didn't realize when we talked is, I'm all for a crossing guard, but it's not just a crossing guard, you have to have lights, you have to change the speed limit. And then it potentially rises up to, to every area we play in town as well. And so there was some discussion about that as well.
And that, that's the reason we wanna do another, another study to see if way that's busier, maybe we can qualify for some of those things.
At least the criteria, then that would be different.
Is there a way to bring up Google Maps so people can see?
That would be good.
What we're looking at?
Okay, that's first. I've already got it up, we just need to do the screen.
Do this? Put it down. This thing doesn't have a very good pointer.
You gotta scroll, you gotta slide it down in two minutes, that's early. Right there, right there. Yeah.
I don't know how far you want me to go in.
We'll get a pointer here too, but, so we're looking at the, uh, the, I don't know what it stands for, MU.
TC.
TC, TV, that's the standards on, on roads, federal standards. So we're looking to see, you know, how far you could paint back. It's the manual on uniform traffic control devices and it's uniform across all United States that governs these states. That's where, um, they get warrants, and warrants are elements that have, have, should be achieved to, within a sign or to take out a sign or to make the changes. That's where all of that talk comes from.
Yeah, so one of the things that I thought when I, when I was there is that we could just put in a cross guard and, and be good, and I'm all for that. But there were a lot of other elements that are actually required by law besides just a, the crosswalk that I was unaware of. Um, there's something else, oh, I think we talked about how far they can paint the red, the red curving and we can get that taken care of really quickly. And I just happened to be there, I went down to, to check out the crossing guard with Christie and, because I hadn't been able to see it yet, I've talked to other people. So I appreciate her letting me go down there. There were a lot of kids in the road still, um, there was one first grader, maybe, right in the middle of the road with his training wheels. And that's something that was a, a training issue, like he was right in the middle of the road and there's cars going behind him, just going slow as he kept going down. And so there's some training issues that need to go on here as well.
Which, which we talked about with Principal Jordan of having some.
Right, and, and the elementary school, from what I understand, has done a lot of training with their kids. They've been very proactive in showing the videos and what they need to do.
The other thing we talked about was maybe, uh, separate from the, the flashing light for a school district, like maybe a flashing light that's not tied to a crossing, but just warning that there's children in there crossing the street. So that's another thing that we were, we're looking at maybe in some.
Particularly the, I was, I was thinking about, I didn't bring up yesterday, but if you do it just during certain times, like, it just hit on flashing during before school, after school, and then you don't have to hit all those other criteria, but you also don't get a crossing guard, so that's a discussion point.
Well, after our last council meeting, I went up there with Christie and I was overwhelmed by the amount of kids. And when I got home, I told Dave that if I had a child that had to travel those roads, I'd want a crossing guard. And I'm so impressed by the mothers that have taken the turn and have been there. Christie's got them all pushing their bikes across the road instead of darting out on their bikes and.
She knows their names too.
She does know their names. That's right. And when Brian and I were there today, uh, yeah. And when Brian and I were there today, yeah, the other side of the road needs a sidewalk anyway.
Is there a timeline, Dave, on what we're looking at as far as painting those curves red?
As soon as we can get the engineers, I think that can be painted really quickly. The other study, we have to wait for the engineer engineering to finish that up, see if it meets warrants at this busier time of year than than April. I'll take care of it in a couple of weeks probably.
Can I borrow the pointer, Dave?
The point?
Yeah. Push that button. Okay. So I went up there today and it is a bad corner. It's the corners is the problem because you can't see. So we can paint that red right in there, that'd be great, but we have all these kids coming down here and down here, they have to cross the street and then come back. Can we look at getting some kind of, you have to have a sidewalk, just that little place and that takes about more than half the kids.
I second that motion.
I don't know what, you know, what it takes, but everybody owns houses, but.
They own the houses if we work with property owners, but we don't own the right of that.
Right, and I know that, but.
That would have to be.
Why this is wondering if that person was in the audience here. There's three, there are three homes.
There's three homes there.
That would be involved.
Right.
And let me have a pointer.
Yeah, well, let me do, let me point one more thing out with the pointer. And I don't know, a lot of times you calm traffic by narrowing it. What happens if you brought a sidewalk with the with the curtain gutter, come out a little bit farther out in the road and you couldn't get access there? And I don't know if that'd be dangerous or not, I'm not a road person, but.
Well, he's he's pointing, Councilman Christensen and I went to a urban traffic here base, I can't remember what it was called.
And they had talked about a little tiny, just like outcropping.
Right. Yeah, well, they even talked about putting like bells of hay temporarily to see if this didn't work, you know, so you have little cost that you can look at it to see if it works. And that sounds kind of funny, you know, and when they told me that, I was like, but that's what they do, they put little bells of hay out there just to see what people do and if it calms the traffic. And they said it's worked really well in Provo, you know, before they spent lots of money. So I kind of like that idea. I don't, I don't know where interested in that, I know it sounds kind of out there, but.
Hey, if we could put a sidewalk there, that'd eliminate two crossings instead of just the one back crossing, eliminate another crossing too.
You would have to put in a crossing here.
Right, right.
And then from there, boy, my hands are not steady, from there around is one property and then from there across is the net and then over to the sidewalk is the third property. From here, it is sidewalk all the way.
All the way to the school.
This side of the road is sidewalk. One could take out that crosswalk and go around the exterior across and then you're on the interior of that curb.
It's a long way to ask a little kid to walk though.
Well, it's it's not for, it's not for convenience, actually it's for safety of the kids and if that's the safety of the kids.
Well, the problem here is, I mean, if you look at that little line in the middle, there's no sidewalks at all around there. And so the safe walking path is not going to be the convenient walking path. That's the unfortunate truth of it. And so you're you're looking at, I don't know what you're looking at, offering you three clothes.
Hey, I'd like to to make mention, I don't know if it's totally appropriate, but that's typical of me anyway, but we have two groups here that have joined us and we greatly appreciate that. One who is fighting us from taking away public parking on the street and the other one fighting to take the public parking away on the street. So as you're listening to this, you kind of get a sense of what we're dealing with up here and the weight on our shoulders as we're trying to balance everything and make make all the, everybody happy at the same time. I I definitely can see the need on this bend as you come around there to to eliminate that parking. So we don't, we don't take that lightly. That's just what I wanted to kind of put out there and hopefully we can come to a resolution quickly that will solve this and make it as safe as possible in all our neighborhoods.
Well, I I think it's safe to say, well, I know it's safe to say, we're not going to let go of this issue until we till we get it as best as we can. And we appreciate your patience and it will not take long to do the the red curving and enforce that.
So just so I'm clear, you want us to look at updating the study? You want us to look at maybe securing some right of way here, working with those three property owners? Then we have to come back to you for budget benefit to put sidewalk in. And then I didn't know if I understood the bells of hay, but we can go find some.
I can get bells of hay.
We can look at something like that.
Yeah, just put them out in the street instead of building out the little, the little concrete bubble that juts out just to see how it works.
See if it calms the traffic.
See if it calms the traffic a little bit. And and I would also be interested in knowing what the long term, well, I think we need to look at it again now that that other road is on the south because I know it's been busy. Councilwoman Carter told me and I've talked to Christie and I've talked to the principal and I've talked to a lot of different people and they're like, it's really busy for PTA president. So, but it wasn't super busy on Friday and it might have been just weird, but it might also be because traffic's being diverted and I don't know, like I'd like to know that information. I I don't know if that was just a weird day or.
I think the principal said the buses are not now going that way as well, so there's probably more traffic going to the south.
Yeah.
So is what Councilman Welton's referring to is that if you come in here and you build out right here on both sides of the road, so instead of having to cross, what is this, forty-five to fifty feet, you narrow it up so they're only crossing between about twenty to twenty-four feet. So they actually will stand on a sidewalk and the distance between it actually shortens up. So they spend less time walking on here. So that's, that's what he's referring to, is these little outcropping bubbles.
He didn't even up the top, you could put one there too.
You could put one right here, it would kind of slow traffic down and and stuff like that. Narrower roads make people drive slower. Twisty windy ones like this encourage people to drive faster, believe it or not. Straight narrow roads are slower. So that that might be an option we could look at as well, is maybe narrow that up so that they spend less physical time on the asphalt and they're standing on sidewalk before then, so.
I got a little more comment on this. Because I was there earlier and there wasn't a lot of traffic about eight o'clock, but a lot of the traffic is the parents taking their kids to school and some of them don't go slow. So we need to educate the parents too, that they're, there's other kids not that aren't in the cars because they're, I mean, they'd be down schooling back and whip around the corners and everything, so I think there's an education of parents too.
Yeah, well, well, we also talked about a, I don't know, education as as another piece, you know, the high school kids, a lot of times, like I did an internship at Mountain Eagle Junior High and part of the all the mentoring, a lot of times it's the high school kids that are right out of school and they're picking up their kids and they're driving a little bit faster. So this doesn't solve the problem, it's not an answer to crossing, but it's a piece that helps. And so we talked about reaching out to the local high schools that have TV broadcasting and see if they could do public service announcement commercials to help educate the high school students. We talked about maybe Hays and City through social media, through newsletter, talking about what the ladder crossing walks are and what they mean when you come to ladder crossing walk to make sure that the drivers as well know what they're supposed to do, what their responsible, their responsibilities are and just bring, just create a community awareness to to traffic issues as a whole and I think that's something that we can do.
You know what Councilman Welton's referring to? That's a ladder type of crossing and whenever you see a ladder type crossing, it is a school crossing and you cannot go through that crossing while anyone is in that crossing, adult or or child. So that that's another thing that we can do.
Right, they're standing at the curb, yes.
That's right. Okay, I think, thank you, Dave, for.
Since we've got both groups on those two subjects, sometimes it's misunderstood when we say it doesn't warrant it. What that means in traffic control devices, we mentioned the manual of uniform traffic control devices and those elements that have to be met. Sometimes it's between a thousand and five thousand and between five thousand and ten thousand. Each one of those are elements and you have to, as per the manual, those are what are called warrants. And so when people talk about it doesn't warrant it, they're really talking about it doesn't meet the elements of that particular sign or that particular type of crosswalk or those type of things. And it's not just saying, hey, it just doesn't warrant it. It's not a a random comment when it says it doesn't warrant it. It's because it doesn't meet the elements and if you put something in that doesn't meet the elements, you actually can increase liability on the city and the traffic matters that that happen in that area for traffic control device that isn't warranted. And that's why all of your, whether it's UDOT or the cities or the counties, they're always concerned about what's warranted and it just says you have to have certain elements to meet that.
Thanks, Mark. Can I say one more thing? So it sounds like we're doing more studies, correct?
Yeah, we're trying to get some estimates from the company that we work with to update it.
So can we keep the police driving by as often as they can? And just for the parents to know, you know, I know one day I was talking to Chief Bishop and and we had a bear out on the loose that they had to get pulled off for, we had somebody growing mushrooms that they had to go and it's not Colorado, but they want to be Colorado, I guess. But there was, there's a few things, so it's kind of hard to station them permanently all the time, but that would be the goal, is that we have people and we have a presence there whenever we can. But but we need to have that understanding that there's a whole city as well too.
So we'll be working as hard and as fast as we possibly can. We won't let this go. So thanks, Dave. We'll move, we'll move on to number, number four, sixty striping plan. Go ahead.
Okay, sixty striping plan from the last meeting we had. We've had our engineers out there with more additional traffic counts. We have listened to the emails and the comments from the neighbors on the streets. I think you've all read them, we've read them as they've come in.
Thank you.
And we've also looked at the the striping plan. The thing that we noticed with the with the current traffic counts, we would be okay not striping the way it was proposed. That day's probably coming, but we are in the middle of a transportation master plan along with our general plan update. As you know, we've had some drafts of that, but until it becomes adopted by the council, there'll be, there'll be some public meetings where the the public come in and talk about those master plans and general plans and other things, public meetings throughout the general plan. But until that traffic study is adopted, we really don't have any data backup to to change the striping right now. And then the count, the traffic counts that happened since the last meeting verifies that the the traffic is not as, there's not as much traffic as as we thought to to make the changes right now. I think there might be a day where that might have to happen, but after the engineers looked at the studies and the traffic counts and the comments and everything, the proposal with the counts would be to, they're going to slurry sill that road, but once the slurry sill is done, they just stripe it just as it has been striped in the past. I know, Doug, you had a comment maybe of doing something different.
Well, the only comment that I had is is they had planned on putting three lanes going north where the TNE is, so you've got a left turn and a straight and a right. And right now I think it's just a left and a right. There's not three lanes there, right? Like that would be nice to have that put in. I don't, I don't know how much impact that that puts on, but I'm okay with the rest of the road staying where it is right there. It'd be nice to have a left-hand turn, a straight and a right-hand turn.
Do you not have to wait?
Yeah.
Right. Did we look at, I don't, I haven't seen the numbers, but measurement, why is it, why, why is, is it wide enough that we could run that center turn lane up to, yeah, whatever is Goose Nest Drive, but what's it actually?
Three hundred south.
Three hundred south, which is a little bit wider road. It would still facilitate parking on the road, it would be similar to the way it is on the north side of the highway on six hundred east, but but it would also give that center turn lane, give you a little bit more room there, make that intersection just a little bit safer. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Can we pull that up on the map? Yeah, you got people.
That affects a couple of people there. You'd still have your parking, but you'd have enough, it'd be wide enough to turn off of there where the road's a little wider.
Well, they're pulling that up, I just have a couple of general comments. Okay, I'm glad that everybody's here and we get a lot of comments back and we pushed this back because we wanted to have public input and we tried to stick notices on doors. One of the things that we found out and we got some some good feedback is I think we have a much better process in place that would allow for a little bit more public comment before it even gets to us. And so a lot of this, we didn't know until it came on the on the council schedule. There was no nefarious plan, it just came up and and we pushed it back because we want, we felt it needed to be heard. And that was the goal from the very beginning and so there was some conversation that that we didn't want that and that's, that can be anything further from the truth, that's why we're here and that's why we're having our third meeting on this, on this issue. And the study showed that, you know, right now that's not the best plan to have and what the long-term plan will be, I don't know. Hopefully that's another council person's decision to make. But I think we had a lot of really good feedback, things that we hadn't thought about and so I really appreciate the feedback, you know, backing into the roads and, you know, a lot of different things. And like I said before, I feel for you, I would feel really bad if my parking was taken away and so I didn't understand that aspect of it.
Well, I'm not aware of what you were saying, Doug, but here's sixty first north, is that?
Home.
I believe what he was saying currently there is a.
There's the TNE, but here's the one hundred north, SR one ninety.
Yeah, right there, there's only two lanes going north.
Going this way.
Yeah.
You have a left turn.
Left turn and you have a right turn.
But not true lane.
I believe Nestor was going to continue with that part of that.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, that's the only thing that I would, that I would change.
No, no bike lanes, a whole lane.
Yeah, there's no bike, yeah.
Parking's still a.
No bike lanes, parking's still, just, just right, right there.
You want three lanes right here.
Well, I want a left turn lane, a straight lane and a right lane, have the traffic placed. We can't?
Not with, because you have to line up across the street, you can't put.
Okay, okay. Well, that's part of the discussion. That was one of the original things that I saw that I was like, I like that.
So what about just that block, two blocks there is just having the middle lane, so you get in the church, get in the TNE, makes just that, those two blocks right there. Then you still have room for parking, I think.
I know the north side of the highway though.
Good. You know, Mike, of course I don't get the votes, counsel, but I think the best way to do this right now until we have a little bit more of an idea, just to leave the the striping the way it is.
The second.
I'm sorry, we've already had a, probably. I'd love to talk to you afterwards.
Yeah, we can talk to you afterwards, that'd be great. So just whatever direction you want to go, that's, that would be the recommendation is to finish the slurry sill and and stripe it the way it's been striped in the past. And then as as these transportation master plan is adopted and as we continue to grow, you'll have to address both of these.
I'm fine with that, that means we don't have to do anything, that's all. But that's how democracy works, so thank you everybody for your participation and and we're trying to be transparent, so.
And I would recommend that we follow the plans that Nestor sent out that will allow town meetings before it even comes up to council. So when we have a proposed change like this, we can sit down and say, here's the concern, here's our various proposals, kind of an open house like we've done. But that plan that Nestor sent out was really spot on and I think the residents will appreciate that and. One other thing I just wanted to point out real quick and just in defense of the engineer who measured it, he actually did notice that the road is only forty-one feet and whatever the various is, like that wasn't noted on his plans and the adjustments were made in the bike lanes. So we're not voting for it and we all agree that not changing anything is good, but our engineers actually did measure that and they did make those notations. It was just felt to be shown that in those areas, the bike lanes were more narrow and things like that, so they did do all of their measurements and they're all recorded on the document.
It's not our intention to to lie to you. You know, I know that's always something that's that's brought up, but it's not our intention to to lie. Sometimes there's miscommunication, but we do not lie, so thank you. but we do not lie, so thank you. Okay, we, we okay? Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. Uh, we would like to talk to somebody after. Thank you, thank you. So, uh, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Okay, we've got two moves in a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.